Okay. Good evening. I'd like to open up the Milford School Board meeting. It is Thursday, January 16th at the Milford High School, Room 1A2. I'll start with introductions left to right. Board Member Holly Talapa. Board Vice Chair Kevin Drew. I'm Board Chairman Ron Carvell. Board Member Mike Hannan. Board Member Rick Wood. Also joining us is Dr. Jessica Heisinger, Superintendent of Schools. Jane Forston, our Business Administrator. And Kristi Mashad, our Assistant Superintendent of Schools. Tonight is the, I'd like to open the budget hearing on the agenda. Tonight, we're going to go through the budget that the board worked on last week. We'll talk about, we'll go over each of the function codes and we'll have questions on those codes. It's in your packet. I believe there's enough up there for everybody to grab with all of the information and we will walk through that with you tonight. So if you go to your first page, the first page that's in your booklet is the 2021 Proposed Budget and I will walk, just go over the numbers with you. And so first, the operating budget last year, 2019-20, the operating budget was $42,134,551. The proposed budget this year for 2020-2021 will be $43,322,305, which is an increase And as you see, that equates to a 2.82 percent overall. The next line is warrant articles that we've had for, last year we had $533,807 in warrant articles. Those were the two contracts that we had and the wage increases into the budget. Those salaries are now rolled into the operating budget. So that makes a reductions off of that $1,187,754. So the total operating expenses, as you see, for this will be, 1920 was $42,668,358, leaving the 2020-21, I'm sorry, 2020 and 2021 school year, $43,322,305, which is actually the increase of $653,947, which equates to a 1.53 percent increase. And what I will do is I will go down through the tax assessment, as you see at the bottom there, which is our appropriation, you know, taking our appropriations out of that. If you go down to the tax rate, which is there, the tax rate for 2019-20 was $19.12. The 2020-21 will be $19.44, which is a .32 per thousand, .32 cent per thousand percent increase, which equates to a 1.67 percent increase overall. And that 1.67 percent increase is with the proposed warrant articles in this package that we will also cover. The below table that you see here is actually the default budget. The default budget for 2020-21 school year is going to be set at $42,911,974. The difference between this year's operating budget proposed and the default budget is roughly, well, not roughly, it is $410,331 difference, which also, which equates to the tax rate being set at $19.18, which is an increase of .06 cents per thousand or a .31 percent increase. Any questions on that table before we read through each function code? Okay. Function 1100 is our regular educational program. This contains our salaries for all regular classroom teachers, support staff, supplies, textbooks, and furniture. I will read and cover just some of the big items. As you see, every one of the lines from 100 to 800 are covered in each one of these. The big increases that you'll see is in the 600 line in this section, which is a 10.6 percent increase or $31,998 change from the, from the previous year to the new school year. That is going to cover furniture, supplies, and materials along with that. And then right below that in the 700 line, you'll see an equipment and property line, which has a change of savings of $48,000. And that is due to our curriculum cycle that we have in, in the school year. So that's a reduction there. The overall changes in the 1100 function, the 1920 school year was a $10,191,444 budget that proposed is $10,377,391, a change of $185,947. In the function 1200, which is our special education programs, this account contains costs associated with special education, salaries, including salaries for the teachers and the support staff, supplies and techs and equipment. The big change that we have, you'll see in there is, obviously, is the salaries. You'll see a $93,000, that's all contractual. Our 300 line in there, professional services, has a change of $31,800. That, I believe, is out of district costs and contracts that we have. And then other supplies, other services are, our support services has a $59,000 increase. So in our special ed function 1200 category, the 1920 year had $4,701,613. The 2021 proposed $4,895,922, which is a dollar change increase of $194,309. Any questions on function 1100 and 1200? 1300 is our vocational educational program. This is the ATC at the high school. It also includes the teacher salary, supplies, techs, and equipment. As you will see, this 100 line is salaries. This is a reduction, I believe, Jane, is this our, this is our culinary teacher that was in the salaries line?
Yes, culinary offset by contractual increases.
Okay. And then in the 700 line is the equipment and property. You'll see a 108 percent increase of $46,357. This will be our lathe that we've put in the budget this year. Everything else are small numbers within this category of 1300. So the 1920 budget was $903,842. In the 2021 budget on function 1300 is $922,361, a change of $18,519. Function 1400 is our co-curriculum. This is our accounts for supporting our athletic programs, summer school programs. It has stipends for our coaches as well, official pays and some equipment. The 100 line, you'll see a big increase in that, $101,813. That is actually a reallocation that is moving some, I believe the athletic director has been moved from where he was in the teacher line, I believe he was in, and we moved him into the co-curriculum. So that is an adjustment. It's not an increase. It's just moving it from lines to line. There are some other ones in this book that we have put them in the proper lines as we go through this. Everything else is minimal that's in that little, in that category. So for the function 1400 line, the 1920 spend was $393,219. The proposed is $503,102, or $109,883. But as you remember, 100, some of that money and the $101,813 is a line change. Any questions in function 1300 and 1400? Function 2100 is student support. This is our guidance counselors, our nurses, social workers, speech therapy. As you see, the 100 line is salary increases that are part of contracts. And then the other big change is a $9,000 increase in equipment and property. That was equipment, I believe, for occupational therapy, speech pathologists.
And nurse's office for our files.
And the nurse's office. So in 1920, our adopted budget was $2,657,919. The 2021 budget is $2,756,225, an increase of $98,306. Function 2200 is our instructional support section. This would include any training, workshops, professional material, travel expenses, curriculum The big change that you'll see in there is the 600 line, which is our supplies and materials. And this is an account change, if I remember right, that $75,000 was an IT change of technology, moving it out of one function line and putting it in the proper line here in the 2200. So it's not really an increase. It's taken from another line.
Where was it taken from?
This is a cost that's been carried, the IT tech associates have been carried in a line that's an audiovisual line. It's not where they are, they should be. They've been moved over to the 2840 accounts, which are the technology accounts.
So on 2200, our instructional support, 1920 adopted budget was $663,058. The proposed is $702,174, a change of $39,116. Any other questions on function 2100 and 2200? Function 2300 is the district administration. This is the superintendent's office, the curriculum coordinator, special ed administration. The big change that you'll see in here is a $56,000 increase in professional services. This would be our legal fees and costs. And that is the only, the other one of salaries at 4.7 percent increase is our contractual salaries as every other function line has. Nothing else is really big in that item. In 1920, we had a budget of $1,805,618. The proposed is actually less of $1,743,689, leaving a def, reduction in six, of $61,929. That reduction of $197,450 is, what is that, Jane? Is that the?
That's your contingency being returned back to the taxpayers.
Right.
Or used to offset taxes.
Function 2400 is our school administration services. This would be administrative services in the three school levels, salaries, principals, assistant principals, secretarial services. As you can see, not really a lot of changes in that section in these line items, not big changes. The 1920 budget number was $1,369,434. The 2021 proposed is $1,415,017, which is a dollar change increase of $45,583. Any questions on function 2300 or function 2400? Function 2600 is our operations and maintenance. This is the salaries of the director of building and grounds, the grounds, the maintenance crew, the ground staff, custodial support. And it also includes our water, sewer juice, usage, disposable service, snow plowing. As you can see, there is one section in there, supplies and materials, have an increase of $96,788. And I believe that is going to include a change account in there. And I believe that's also our electrical, our water, sewer, natural gas is in that line as well.
And can I just speak to that quickly?
Sure.
The reason that's a little bit up, if you take a look at some of your historical, we've been under budgeting. What the, has been the past history is to do a three to five year average of cost. What we have done instead this year is do a three to five year average of usage. So it's either the thermes or kilowatts and then apply what our contractual cost is to it.
Okay. Thank you, Jane.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Just quickly back to function 2400. What is account 800, other objects?
In the 20, you say in the school administration?
Yeah.
2300.
20, function 2400, account 800, other objects.
So I, this could be a variety of different lines, this other objects, right, Jane?
Mm-hmm. Yep. And they're stemming mostly from the 810 account. Yeah.
Do you have a detail of 810?
Yeah, that's what I'm, I'm looking at now for you. I know the line, but I, I just don't know everything that's in it.
Some, some of that could be graduation expenses in there?
Bear with me a minute. They may be school-based, they may be administrator-based, and those are spread throughout. And they fall under your 810 account, the dues and fees line.
Yeah.
So just to clarify then, an increase would be students aren't paying their dues?
Oh, no, 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 no. No, these would be administrative fees. It may be for membership in a, I'm trying to think, New England Principals.
Association.
Thank you.
Yeah, or the New England League of Middle Schools. Okay.
Okay. The next function is 2700, is pupil transportation. This is our bus services, including special ed and vocational ed transportation.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Before we move off 26, can I just ask a quick question? Just clarifying, Jane, 700 line, the 50,000, that's the Heron Pond roof, is that?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, no more.
Any more questions on 2600 now or after 27?
What's that? I was going to do it after 27. I'm trying to do two at a time, keep us moving.
That's fine.
This will be quick there, Mr. Martin. Transportation, pupil transportation is contractual. It's an increase of $21,2519. Our bus contract is 1920, $1,297,976. The proposed is $1,319,495. Any questions on function 2600 and 2700?
Steve Martin, five Constitution Court. I'm speaking for myself, but the point I'm about to make was unanimous by the Budget Committee as well. We cannot support this operating budget because it does not include the money for the boilers. Two reasons. You never put something as a separate warrant article that absolutely has to be done to run a school. You have to heat the building. If the voters vote down your expenditure trust fund, all right? Technically, because it doesn't say boilers in there, you can still replace it, but you don't have $300,000 to do it, all right? The $300,000 needs to go in the operating budget. And it has to come out of the expenditure trust fund. The expenditure trust fund is for planning purposes, surprises, and futures. Knowing you need a $300,000 boiler and budgeting it as an expenditure trust fund is very poor management. What are you going to do? Write the trustees of the trust fund a check on July 1st and then on July 7th, send them a letter and say, "We need $300,000 back to replace the boiler"? That boiler has to go in the operating budget. I think, I think you're running a very high risk because I don't think you're ever going to get an expenditure trust fund of $600,000. We, the Budget Committee was unanimous.
So I, I saw that, those notes, and I did some research on that and I don't disagree with you. And I was going to bring that up at the end of this, that, to come back to the board. The, the one issue that I was looking at is, I went back to look at the default, if that was going to make any changes under the new law. And I had to re-review the changes to see if that was going to impact our default calculation, which it will not.
Okay.
So I, I don't disagree with you, but I will, that was something that we was, we're probably going to talk about after I.
Okay. Again, we still wanted other reductions in the budget, but that $300,000 has to be in your operating budget.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you, Mr. Martin.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin, just so I'm clear, the proposal of the Budget Committee was to cut $300,000 in the existing budget to make room for the boiler in the exist, in the proposed budget. Is that?
Our proposal was a $700,000 reduction, but if you move the boiler in to net it to $400,000 reduction.
Exactly. So at the current budget number, let's, let's say that under your comment, the warrant article doesn't pass. We still would have to cut $300,000 out of the budget if it passes as it is, and we'd be in the exact same boat. And the board would have full authority to do that, would they not?
If the warrant, which warrant article?
If the warrant.
The expenditure trust?
Yep. The expendable trust does not pass and the district feels that they need to do the boilers regardless. The board has full authority to make the reductions at that point to fit the boiler, the boiler into the budget, correct?
You, you absolutely do, but you won't have the $300,000 in the budget.
Well, we will because we wouldn't have cut it to make room for it, as you're suggesting.
So, so now we're getting to my bone of contention, all right? It's the board's responsibility to be as transparent as possible in your budget. Everyone knows you need to replace those boilers. When it's not in there, what are they doing? Where are they going to move money around? This is the criticism I hear from everybody. And the guidance I gave when I was three years on the Milford Budget Committee, three years on the Milford School Board, and 11 years as a business administrator for 11 different boards, you've got to be as open and honest as possible. If you need to replace that boiler, put it in the budget and cut it someplace else. You're not going to get, no one is going to give you a $600,000 expenditure trust fund. I'll tell you that right now. I think $300,000, you got a shot at getting. So you got to assume that that's not coming through.
Yeah, absolutely.
So the last several years, in fact, when the $3 million bond was voted, I recall several people standing up in front of the deliberative session and actually making comments about their concerns with us borrowing money. And my comment is, is if we put $300,000 into the budget, the question comes, what do you cut and still move the district in the direction that we're trying to move it with the strategic plan? And we can go dollars for dollars. At the end of the day, if everything passes, and it's, it's an if, right? If everything passes, then the same dollar value would have been spent. And, and I don't think we've been less than transparent when it comes to the $300,000 and we're replacing it and why. In fact, I've been very clear at every single meeting, we've discussed it. So I think that, you know, from my perspective, by putting $300,000 into the budget, one of the challenges we have had, year after year after year in this district, is we've robbed operating expense to pay for salary and benefits. We put $300,000 into the budget, people think we have $300,000 extra each year. What's going to happen next year when we don't have a $1.5 million windfall and people are looking to make up that gap? We're going to be in trouble. So by putting an expendable trust fund together, what happens is the voters get the choice this year to fund it and use that money that you had suggested we split half and half between the operating and, and the buildings, right? And, and then next year, if we need to tighten that budget gap because we don't have that money coming in from Concord, we have an opportunity not to increase those expendable trust funds and essentially be flat. And so that's, that's the logic by which I'm, I'm proposing what I proposed. And that, that's why I think, now, I wouldn't disagree with you that at deliberative session, it's entirely possible and certainly up to the voters to decide what level of funding they'd like to do for the expendable trust fund. But the vehicle itself sets us up to be able to manage without interest, building repair. We've, we've demonstrated over the last five years, an $18 million list of deferred maintenance. So it's not just about $300,000 boiler in one building. It's about an ongoing process to set ourselves on a course to maintain our buildings and not be asking the taxpayer to tear them down and rebuild new ones because we didn't maintain them in the first place.
Let me be clear. There has been no better, bigger supporter of facilities in this district. Year after year, I always complained, why are you returning money at the end of the year instead of spending it on your buildings? One of the tricks I learned early on, when I was on the Milford School Board, when the superintendent and the administrators came in with the budget. First, the last question I ask every administrator, two questions. What did you not put in your budget request that you really need? And what did you put in your request that didn't make the superintendent's budget? I asked that question because maybe the superintendent cut something that I think should be in there. 11 years, my school boards, I gave that same advice to my school boards. They asked the administrators that question. At our Saturday meeting, I asked every one of our administrators those two questions. Other than Heron Pond, who said they did not put in musical instruments because Jane found them some money elsewhere, not one administrator said there was something that they needed that they didn't ask for. And not one of them said something that was in the budget was cut, okay? In my profession, this is called a wish list budget. I guarantee you, Jane could go in and cut $300,000, $400,000 without having to cut heads that deal with kids. All right? Because guess what? If everything the administrators wanted is in the budget, then there's things in there that they could live without for another year. That's my concern. I did not see quite, I, I view this as a wish list budget because of the answers I got from the administrators.
So if I may, one last question.
One last.
So if this is a wish list budget, as you put it, and you're a member of the Budget Committee and have the entire budget and full experience as a business administrator, I don't recall that we've received any suggestions on where to cut that $300,000 or $400,000. We just got a flat line number. Sorry, if I may, just finish. So to suggest that you're guaranteeing somebody can go in and find $400,000 when you've been poring over the budget for the last two months as well, and we haven't heard those suggestions, that concerns me because I don't think we can find without heads $400,000.
Mr. Chairman?
So, hold on a second.
I'm done.
You're done?
Yeah.
Okay.
The position.
Let him respond to that first before.
The position that I took, the Budget Committee agreed to, and Pete Bezzolier agreed to, it is not our job to create the board's budget. Had we received a detailed school board budget, we absolute, we, we have identified areas that we would cut. But the position we took is, where, our job is not to create the school board's budget. You should have had a detailed budget a lot sooner than Monday night. And then we would have gone through with specific reduction. Even our chairman was just looking at, well, okay, what if we just cut 1% on this? The reason why you didn't get the detail is because we still have not seen a final detailed school board budget. Jane gave us the bottom line number Monday night.
Mr. Chairman?
I want to get to, I want to get to Ms. Talapa first.
So I also agree that the boilers should likely be in the operating budget. And when we think of a $300,000 number, there are creative ways that we could recuperate some of that. One way to recuperate $60,000, which I think is an extremely responsible way, would be to hire a three-day-per-week floating guaranteed substitute nurse for one year. If at the end of one year, we still feel that that was not sufficient, then we could look at bringing on a full-time fifth nurse. I think it is irresponsible to bring on a full-time fifth, full-time nurse, which would basically put the ratio of one nurse to students at 460 and the state only mandates 750. So I think that everyone would need to put their heads together and try to figure out where we could recuperate dollars. And that, that particular line item, I firmly believe, we are making a big mistake by hiring a full-time fifth head nurse. And I don't think it's what the. full-time fifth head nurse, and I don't think it's what the nursing employees support, and I don't think it's in the best interest of the district or necessarily the children. Because I think, right now, we're still getting a great benefit, three days a week, consistent. It also alleviates the problem of subs, that we have a hard time finding substitute nurses. I know that there had been some thought process that it might be hard to find this position, but we won't know until we look. And that's, I mean, that's 60,000 right there. That knocks it down to 240.
So, Mr. Martin, I'm just going to, before you run away. So, first off, you know, this was the budget that was given to the Budget Committee to review upfront.
The superintendent's budget, yes.
And being on the Budget Committee the years before this Board, this is how the budget came to the Board and deliberated and created a list of reductions and sent back before the Board made entire more reductions. It was our goal as the Budget Committee, as long as I was on the Budget Committee, how that was done. Putting that aside, I will just tell you my statement of the boilers. I don't disagree with you on the boilers putting into the operating budget. But here was my dilemma with why it was done that way. So, and why I wanted to check about the default budget. Adding $300,000 to this budget puts the gap between the budget and the default at a $700,000 difference. And you know, you've lived in this town as long as I have, is that sometimes, when the voter goes to that voting booth, and they have a choice, and they see $700,000, that's a lot of money, they take an image of, that's a big increase, and they just select no. They just, some of them just do that because of that gap, because they want low taxes. And that was the hesitation for me, because if that's the case, and we get more to say, don't support that budget, and now we have no boilers, a lower contingency that, as you know, we have a lot of the buildings that have issues, now we're cutting deeper into already struggles of this budget. And now you're talking, you know, now we don't have a contingency to pick that up, and if we do, and they do pass the 300,000, that's just the boilers, and we are crossing our fingers for the rest of the year. And that was the dilemma I had. I don't disagree with you, that point. I don't disagree that that has to be in the operating budget, and I feared it trying to get its own single warrant article, because when no gets done, it's no, no matter what you do. So, that was why I've been contemplating this and checking the default law and just making sure, but that was the concern I had with putting it in.
I will say this, we never expected the Board to agree to the 700. I personally thought you'd probably split the difference. We were shocked when it came back higher than the last one we had. I still think, I understand your concern, but guess what? There are going to be people, if the default budget is $50,000 less, they're going to vote no, okay? I think somewhat, if you can make your case, and I can't imagine anyone in this town arguing that you don't have to heat the high school or the buildings.
I know.
If you can't make your case, then, I'm sorry, but I would put the 300,000 back in. If you think your bottom-line number is right, put the 300,000 back in, find 300,000 else to remove. I guarantee you, on a $43 million budget, if you can't find $300,000, just go into miscellaneous, just cut supplies 2%, cut X 1%. I mean, trust me. I'm sure Jane could find 300,000 without even touching salaries and benefits. My personal, I'm not speaking for the Budget Committee, my personal feeling, although they did agree with most of me.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Can I just remind the Board that initially, when the warrant articles were brought forth, I had proposed that the boiler and the barn, at least for, in theory, be put into a health and safety maintenance article, so you would be very clear. It actually stated what it was for, and under the design of that warrant article, it gives you three years to complete the work, just in case you couldn't complete it in one year. So, just, it is another option that, you know, that is where I had brought forth, but just bringing that up.
Health and safety, instead of deferred, what do they have it called now?
Deferred maintenance.
Deferred maintenance, yeah.
I think you definitely need a deferred maintenance, but your health and safety, under the way the warrant is constructed, it gives you three years to complete your work.
Yeah.
And it's for a specific purpose. So, if you did the boilers, and here I had written it as boilers and the barn, so if that costs you 450,000, at the end of those three years, that 50,000 returns to the general fund and goes to offset taxes.
Thank you, Jane.
Susan Smith, 136 Anna Drive. I am also a member of the School Budget Advisory Committee. Just like to clarify that it was not unanimous that we felt that 700,000 should be cut from the budget and 300,000 put into the operating budget for the boilers. I did not agree with that proposal. I wasn't at the meeting to vote, but I did subsequently express my concerns with that decision to the committee members. My concern about $300,000 going into, I have two concerns about putting that into the operating budget. One, I didn't feel that there was $300,000 to cut that wouldn't cause harm. There's another Board member who expressed they thought the budget should be larger for that reason. I also have concerns that if it's in the operating budget, and there's some kind of emergency, and we have them every year, that, poof, that $300,000 for the boiler is gone. And then we've got to cut even more money when a boiler fails, if one fails this next year. So, for those two reasons, I did not agree with that proposal. I also have concerns about the size of the maintenance warrant trust. I'm concerned that it won't pass at 600,000. I would strongly suggest a lower number. I realize that means that other maintenance might not get addressed. However, I think people do, many people do understand the problems with the heating systems in the schools and all of the other maintenance issues, and we do have a maintenance facilities committee starting up that will hopefully make this problem even more visible to voters, so that they will support the funds needed to start tackling that. But we're not there yet, and I just would hate to see that fail, and then, yes, then you're going into the budget and you're cutting whatever it is you're cutting, which, from a lot of the response that people had to the previous Board meeting to tonight, is not going to go over well. I think there will be a lot of objection to the budget being cut further, and particularly if it involves cutting staff, professional staff, and not other staff. So, that's all I have.
Thank you.
David Wilson, live up on Wildflower Way. My concerns with just the paperwork, I think, you know, when you talk about differences of what numbers can be used for what, I know that there's a lot of things that the buildings are in need of, and as well as, from a curriculum standpoint, there's been asks in the budget. I think if we start to look at things as some sort of compromise, somewhere looking where we're at in the middle, it was my idea that a $600,000 expendable trust, right out of the gate, was probably a little on the high side. Other people have commented that there's an underlying tone in the town that people like to have a choice of what monies are going to be spent on what, you know, a detailed list, right? We learned that, I think there's like 38 some odd warrant articles for the town, and that represents the theme of that idea. Initially, I took the idea of looking at what happened last year, when we needed, from the town's perspective, we needed to put HVAC in our town hall and update that, and it was a $400,000 expenditure, and that passed. As I also recollect, too, a lot of people commented that, it seems there's, in recent times, there's been a change in mindset that a lot of things have been passed. It's not that we get nos on everything. So, I'd like to put the idea out there that if people see something that says, look, we have buildings that are, you know, built in the '50s, we're updated in the '80s, and now we're at a point where we need to update something. But we're also asking for a very expensive piece of equipment that we have workings going on with NCC that has threes of those lays. I mean, I've sat down with Vasa Partnudi and Mr. Zidis, and I understand that program is a diamond for our district, and yes, it needs to be enhanced, it needs to have the appropriate things. I look at what we're looking to spend in our culinary program, which, we have a production kitchen, we have a restaurant-style kitchen in our school. No other school probably has that around here, but it's not the best thing for the education of the students. And if we make that better from an education standpoint, giving them the stations and the cookers so they can be individuals and not trying to fight for space on a six-burner stove, that, I think, has a reasonable amount of expense. And I know I'm being pretty strategic here for a reason. I mean, when you look through all the pages of our budget book, I see a lot of general supply lines. General supply is this, every department in every school gets a general supply line. And I had commented to Jane, I said, what happens if we just, every year, it looked like the same amount we had last year? We actually was using the same for the next year. But did we really spend it? I don't really know. But what if we made a decision to retract that by 10% on each line and recoup all that money? By not spending it on the lay, there, you're halfway to the distance of the boiler you want. So, maybe we only have to ask for $150,000 for a boiler, or is it boilers? Is it plural? Can we do one now, one next year? The expendable trust, it definitely makes sense to at least get that out there to say, yes, we're going to start an expendable trust. Maybe just fund it this year with 100,000. Start small, so we can slowly gravitate upwards to where we want to get to that cap, where just in case something really bad happens, we have the money to cover it. I've reached out to these Board members, you know, pertaining to the barn, which I think is, I mean, yes, it's a piece of school property, and it has a purpose, but I think that there's, I have a hard time spending that amount of money on a building that holds stuff. It doesn't touch our kids. Yes, it touches our fields and whatnot, but we've been making do for the past year. I remember when Mr. Drew last year said, well, hey, if that building's not safe, we've got to get fencing around it. That fencing is still there. So, we're doing okay without that building. And wherever we're storing our other stuff, as far as the cost, I know I reached out to Ms. Talapa and had a healthy discussion here about, you know, companies that that barn could be sold to, reclamation to, and then using proceeds to help fund. A structure that has a good look to it, has the purpose, fills the bill, fits the need, add on to the three-door garage that we put our football equipment in, there's definitely options, and I think that those should be explored. Instead of just creating a big pool of money, and then all of a sudden, you know, we see a big new building happen that maybe the town people didn't really have a say-so, that yes, they wanted that money to go to fit the schools, but maybe if we see it going into a barn, I think that's probably going to rub some people the wrong way. So, I know we're coming under a timeline and a gun to get a decision made, deliberative around the corner. I think that we have the ability to retract some of these numbers, find a compromise, find somewhere some middle ground, so we get the buildings, the heating, the updating that they need, the students still get things that update certain programs that are in the most dire need, and we put some of those really nice-to-have, the really big wants, maybe on the shelf for the next year, or try to find some other way, working with our local businesses, our local communities, someone has, you know, the ability to donate funds to go towards a lathe or something like that, you know, that's a very targeted item, and I know it's probably going to be, it would be a great to have, but that's a lot of money that we can put to some of these other things that we're all talking about. Because I think that has to have some consideration, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paula Durand. There have been a lot of people in the past one to two months who've listened to the budget presentation that started back in November, and people have been very vocal about what they would think the priorities should be. I don't do social media, but from what I hear, people online doing social media have been very vocal as well. But I think the reality is that when people go and vote in March, a majority of the people who are voting on that day are going through the operating budget warrant and the other warrants, and they're looking to see, did the Milford School Board approve all of this? Did the Budget Committee approve all of this? And if they find that both parties have approved this and are in favor of this, then they usually will vote for it. So, I don't know where exactly the Budget Committee stands with their votes, and I don't know if, I think the deadline is the 21st, where some of that needs to take place. But I think somehow, the end line in terms of presenting this in hard copy to the community, there needs to be approval of both parties in order for the operating budget to pass and in order for our warrants to pass. And if we don't have that somehow, if that's not being negotiated by the key people who are involved, then I think we'd be in danger of not having our warrants pass and not having the operating budget pass. So, I would encourage whatever needs to be happening, so that we can have, you know, the appropriate bodies give approval to this needs to somehow happen. Thank you.
So, I'll just respond to that. That was one of many calculations that I was looking at, is, because I did speak with the Chairman of the Budget Committee when the vote came out, and that concerned me with the numbers of their requests of change for that. And that's why I said that one of the discussion points is that we were going to have tonight was, I agree with putting the boilers in there, but I think if you do that, then I would also, and the Board can discuss that, is drop our, which we did deliberate for at our last meeting, bring our facility bond down $300,000, throwing that in the operating budget and making that a smaller number. We went back and forth with that to try to make it work with the numbers, and we did talk about it the last meeting. And then, when I did receive the notes from Mr. Nguyen with all of the comments on that, I went back and checked to make sure that the default would stay the same, and worried that now your default is a $700,000 gap, and looked at some history of, you know, when it's that far. But I think this Board, or at least in my eyes, will discuss that at the end of this, because I do agree with you, Ms. Durand, is that the keys of those is having collaboration between the Budget Committee and the Board, and when you don't see that, that throws off voters in this town, and I've been here long enough to see that. And that, when I did get that vote, that was a very concerning number when we're going in there. It's a lot of work that everybody did, and the Budget Committee did, and the Board did, and everyone in our meetings, and that right there just takes it all away. And that will send you to a low number, and, you know, we struggled to put this budget together and not make dangerous cuts, so, I agree with you. So, these are questions, are we still in these two areas of questions for function 20? I know you just came in, but we're only talking about these two functions right now.
What page are you on?
2600, yeah. 2600 function and 2700 function.
Like the fourth page.
Fourth page.
It's going to be.
Operations and maintenance and people transportation.
Yeah. Transportation and operations and maintenance.
Oh, nope, nope. I'll wait. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I lost a page I was on. Okay, continuing on. Function 2840 is our technology services. This account includes the salaries of the Director of Technology, our database administrator, technology support coordinator. You'll see a couple of big changes in there in the professional services, and an increase in the salaries line. These are reallocations of, if I remember correctly, the reallocations in 2840 is moving...
From 2200 accounts, from the AV account, it's moving the tech associates.
The AV, the techs.
To IT.
And then, the other ticket item is the equipment property, $118,000 increase. That is the Chromebooks and other items that was put into the budget for technology. So, this line item at 2840, the 1920 budget was 633,142. The proposed 2021 is 790,391, an increase of 157,249. Function 2850 is our early retirement. The 1920 is 505,542, and the proposed is a 470,211, a decrease of 35,331. Any questions on function 2840 and 2850? Function 2900 is benefits and taxes. This is our disability insurance, our workman's comp, unemployment compensation, tuition reimbursement, sick leave, items like that. sick leave, items like that, our FICA and Medicare. The 1920 budget was $12,125,344. The proposed 2021 is $12,268,677, an increase of $143,333. Function 5100 is our interest and principal. The total lines, the budget was, in 1920, was $1,428,586, with the retirement of the Heron Pond and the leases that we have, having reductions in interest and principal. The proposed 2021 is $820,865, which is a reduction change of $607,721. Any questions on 2900 and function 2900 and function 5100?
Pollard Rand. Just one quick question. How much is the health insurance going up? I know in the past we've budgeted like 10%, but how much did it actually go up for next year?
We budgeted the .3%.
OK. And that's... Have you received the final numbers for...
Yes, yes.
It'll be .3%?
Yep. And I believe the dental went up 3.8%.
OK. So it's going up .3% or 3%?
.3%.
.3%, OK.
Next function is 5220. This is our food service. 1920 is $1,905,750. The proposed 2021, $1,900,000, a reduction of $5,750. This is a... I believe we do this in a three-year average, correct?
Three to five.
Yep. So the total numbers for the budget, the 1920 budget was $42,868,358. Proposed $43,322,305, an increase of $453,947. Any questions on function 5220?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I've left this on here just because I don't want to throw the board for a loop and just give you a whole new budget number. But moving forward, you will not see the 5220 fund transfers on there. You will also not see the offsetting side on the revenue worksheet. These have been included in your operating budget, and Mr. Martin has pointed out, he didn't feel they should be there, and I fully agree. So I just didn't want to take them out and throw you for a loop tonight while you were trying to do this, but they will be coming out moving forward.
So the next item on there is the tax impact analysis, and Jane, I know that you was working on this and going back and forth, so I will let you go over the tax impact analysis for them.
Yep. As you look at the first column of numbers, these were how your property taxes were assessed this year. We had $42,868,358 as the operating budget. We had revenue offset of $12,324,032. Your state property tax that is assessed, $3,037,778. Total to be raised is $27,506,548, and adding back in the state property tax that we retain, we raised but we retain, $30,544,326, for a tax impact of $19.12 per thousand. As we move to the 2021 budget, we currently have the $43,322,305 that was presented tonight as the operating budget, offset by $13,56,608 of revenue. That does not include any fund balance because at this point, we don't know whether we'll have one. Again, the offset of the state property tax that will need to be raised, and bringing that back in because we are not a donor town, we retain it. It's $30 million, gives us $30,265,697 for a tax impact estimated of $1,895. To that, we have added the current warrants that were presented tonight of $200,000 for a 12-cent impact, $600,000 for the maintenance expendable trusts for 37 cents, for a total of $800,000 or 49 cents added to the $1,895, bringing you to $31,65,697 to be raised by taxes or $19.44. And these are estimates.
Yes. Any questions on the tax analysis?
Pollard Rand. I guess my general question is, we're saying that it's a 1.67% increase. Bearing in mind that we've gotten, that includes the extra revenue that we've gotten from the state, that includes the freeing up of the Heron Pond bond money, I guess my question is, what kind of position does this put us in for the following fiscal year? Are we going to have numbers that are 4%, 5%, 6%, 7% net increases? Because these are all... That state money is kind of a one-time thing, and so my concern is looking down the road beyond this particular budget. How are we... You know, it sounds all well and good that it's a 1.67% increase, but there's a lot of other things that have gone into it, and so I would start to worry about the following year and what the taxes would look like. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Wood.
So just to point out, that 1.67% increase assumes both warrant articles pass. So the actual tax impact of the budget as proposed is actually a tax savings. Goes from 1912 as a rate to 1895 as a rate. This is actually a tax savings. This tax impact statement is exactly why I proposed the structure of the expendable trusts and pulling things in, because you ask a great question. The challenge is, is we have $730,000 rough numbers in revenue that is in this budget that is a plus, that's not going to be in next year, so we can't count on. If we leave the budget the way it is currently proposed, and we have that $700,000 to make up, we have the option as taxpayers next year not to put anything in that expendable trust, which means we can manage the budget and that absorb that hit. If we put more money into the budget, the actual potential for tax impact could be very great, as you've stated. So that is why, and that's part of the strategy of why I propose to put these expendable trusts in instead of put things into the budget, because it is going to be a big challenge to absorb that revenue next year if it doesn't come through, and we can't count on the state coming through with that revenue. So that's a great question. I would also point out, if I may, Mr. Chair, listening to the comments, and the $600,000 number really was a number of understanding that we were going to have a discussion at deliberative. So I just want to share with you, if you decided to do a $400,000 expendable trust, leave the boilers or whatever we decide to purchase and deal with at that moment, that's a 20-cent increase instead of a 37-cent increase. There's a 17-cent savings. So those are some of the options that we can have through the deliberative process, and that's exactly why I did not, and I still do not, favor placing the boiler, the money for boilers into the budget, because what that does is that makes our gap next year, regardless of whether we do boilers when we're doing budget, much bigger, $300,000 bigger, to deal with that $700,000 revenue decrease that we have to expect after this year. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just to add to that, that would be in a perfect world. If we end up having to spend all of the money in both of those expendable trust funds, then the reality is that we likely would need to go back to the voters and once again ask for funding next year. Just to play devil's advocate and point out that eventually, we're going to have to buy two new boilers. Eventually, we're going to have to do something about the barn. Do we have to spend $200,000? No. I think we could probably get out of it for $50,000. But regardless, when we look at this building and the infrastructure, and we can't predict the future, I think it's wise to put money aside and to create the expendable trust funds, but I also fear that $600 is an awful big number when you're sitting in that booth making decisions, and there's going to be all the town warrant articles and... That's it.
I don't disagree. And if you look at the impact as proposed, it's reasonable, but in the same sense, I agree with you that there's going to be a lot of education needed. So the barn keeps coming up. I'll be right up front. I'm not sold on a $200,000 expenditure on the barn either. That's not playing into my thought process here. We need more than two boilers. Actually, almost every building needs boiler replacements, and there's multiple boilers in each building. So that's just one item, one piece of infrastructure that needs replacement. We need roofs on this building. We need some HVAC equipment that didn't get done because we only had enough money in the barn to do partial HVAC things.
Exactly. So the fund's going to get spent.
So the expendable trust fund may get spent, but then the voters will have an option next year to focus on whether or not they want to do additional improvements to the facility's infrastructure through that particular warrant. If we try to put that in the budget, there's no way to point out, and frankly, there's no way to hold accountable whether or not it gets spent on that. And that's kind of the challenge. That's one of the reasons why I like this vehicle is because it forces future boards and the citizens, it forces, if we put money into that account, for it to get spent on facilities, infrastructure, not on employees or benefits or anything other than facilities, because without our facilities being maintained, what typically happens is they get driven into the ground, and then we're asking taxpayers for replacement buildings. And I don't think that's wise. Good point, though. Appreciate it.
So this year, what we've also done is we've taken the same format in your packets, and we won't go through all of those at all, but they're the default budget. That is the setup for the default budget calculation for each one of those line items. And there is also the tax analysis impact for the default budget. Is there anyone that's going to have any specific questions on the default? Mr. Martin?
The default budget law is real simple. It's your current year approved budget, less one-time expenditures, plus increases required by law. I would love to see a handout that starts with the current year, the 20 budget, with the listing of the one-time expenditures that were cut out, and then what was added back in. And I'm not looking for every salary account. I mean, $720,000 for CBA agreements is fine. Because, to be honest with you, the handout that the Budget Committee got, I have a hard time following how the default budget was obtained because not all of that detail is in black and white in front of me. Jane said how she did it, but I would really like to see a handout, current year budget, listing of all the one-time expenditures cut out, and then what was added back in, like the collective bargaining agreements, outer district tuition, the stuff that you have to do. And then I could make more sense of the default budget.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a quick question? Mr. Martin, by object or just by account code? Is that sufficient detail?
Well, that's the beauty with the default budget. The default budget is not a budget. The default budget is one number. So I don't need account number. I mean, literally, a line item, one line item would be out-of-district tuition, XYZ. It might be sped services, OT. I'm not worried about the accounts. I just want to know the ins and outs on how you got to the default budget line.
Agreed.
I actually shared with Jane what I used to do, which sort of does the same thing. Mine had a lot more detail. I'm not... Jane's got enough on her plate. I know she can't, well, especially with the crummy software you have, it would take her five years to get to that. But just a little bit more ins and out detail.
OK. Any questions? I'll open up just for any other questions on the budget items, function codes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gary Daniels, Witten Road. Throughout the presentation, you mentioned numerous reallocations of funds from one account to another. For the average citizen trying to follow that, I think it really gets lost, and I was wondering if there's any one document that shows those transfers.
So I'll let Jane do that because I'm on the same page with you, because it was, we've moved a lot of things around in the last six months, or she has.
I've been trying to be very slow and very deliberate for just this reason, because I don't want to just do a, you know, move everything all at once, because there's a lot of accounts that are not where they should be coded. And so what I can do is try to break those down. I mean, for instance, your tech associates, they need to be in a technology account, which is a 2840. I use the state chart of accounts. And so going through what should be in each of those buckets of money, I've been trying to very slowly get to putting the costs where they belong. They had been sitting in an audiovisual line. That's not an appropriate account for them. Same with the athletic director. He's been sitting in a regular ed teaching account, and he should be in a co-curricular account. So I have moved those over, but I will try to give you the ins and outs. There have been quite a few moves. We had supplies that were being charged to repair and maintenance service lines from outside contractors. So I have been trying, because the accounts were never set up, so I've been either setting them up or moving them to align with the chart of accounts.
Now, I appreciate the effort, and I think it's great that you're trying to do that and get them back. Just saying that, you know, I started with the athletic director, and I was looking for some other place that was going to be decreasing to go there, and I really never found it throughout the presentation. But just in the way of transparency, if you had something that showed people, we took it from this account to put it in this account so that they can follow that and make sense out of it, I think it'll be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jen Campbell, Amherst Street. I just have... So first, I wanted to just ask about the Kronos time management was rolled out to secretaries and maintenance staff over the summer, and everyone else started in the fall. So I was just wondering how the implementation of that rolled out to staff.
That's currently not rolled out. We did a test swipe yesterday. We've had some holdups with middleware in trying to get our software system to work with the Kronos clock system. There's a middleware piece to each piece of it. So we are still in the process of rolling that out, and like I said yesterday, it was yesterday or today, there was a test swipe done to make sure all the badges that have been assigned are actually recording.
OK.
So let me just remind you, and it's great to get that, but this is a budget hearing, so there are questions about the budget.
Yeah, and I think that rolls right into the budget, because I think a lot of the HR questions and whatnot, I think some of the questions that came up earlier in the week were, "How are these systems supporting the SAU?" So I do feel like that's tied to money at the SAU.
So the operating of it and the rollout, I guess I'm just trying to figure out, questions on what we just presented in the budget. Are you looking for how much we spent on Kronos, if Kronos is in the budget?
How much has been spent? How much staff has needed training? How that has helped the HR person as adding a HR generalist? The time and whatnot? Have we seen a difference in how that's affected the overall SAU function? And that was my question, if that wasn't specifically for budget. I think we pay for it, and it's tied to budget, so that's where I was kind of going at. The other question I have, have we ever looked at, it sounds like we're in need of a lot of behavioral support, and it sounds like we have kind of two different tiers, but we have the outer district, we have in districts. It sounds like we've tried to do multiple things in between. Have we ever looked at... Have we ever looked at having an out-of-district placement within the school district?
So that, again, that's not part of the budget hearing. This is a budget hearing to talk about the budget, not an operations, not looking at other items. This is a budget hearing.
Okay.
So there is a board meeting next week. If that's on the agenda, then that's a discussion. But we're in the budget hearing of costs and going over the proposed budget in each one of these functions. The operations side of it is not at this hearing.
Okay. Then I guess my other question would be, I have a, and I think that this is directly tied to the budget, how come we're spending 54% of our Title I funds on administration salary?
So do we have our Title I money, Jane, in front of you?
I don't.
I find it, I find it, it's disheartening to believe that as a school, we find it, that we're, every board meeting, I feel like, you know, we're here for the kids and we're here for this, and then 54% of our total allocated money is being spent towards admin salaries.
So then, Jane, you're shaking your head.
I don't believe that much is being spent towards admin salaries. And I do know that the amount being spent for the current year is less than the director in there 100% for the prior years.
So in last year's budget, 14%, $10,360 was spent for the middle school, 40%, so $38,000 was spent at the SAU level. At the, at Jax, $9,074. At Heron Pond, it was different. This year, $30,000 is being spent at the SAU level. I just struggle that 54% is being spent on admin salary. And I don't, if that level of admin support is needed, then I think we should add it to the regular budget. I don't think it should be taken from kids, from money that we're getting from the state.
Okay.
So...
Thank you.
Brenda Walker, Route 13. Can I just ask a clarifying question? On Monday night, you had the options regarding the reduction of the library assistants. Could you tell me where those numbers, how you got those numbers?
What are you talking about? The options of?
The reduction of the three library assistants?
So the proposals that the superintendent and the administration put together? That's what you're talking about?
Sure.
So...
Where did those numbers come from? We have $54,000 reduction for the high school, library assistant reduced to part-time, $15,502 for the middle school, and then an $18,763 reduction to the, how was that?
Brenda, those are the all-in costs of those employees. So reducing, that would be, that is as they are either full-time or part-time, depending on the person. The reductions come from the wage-related, which would be FICA, New Hampshire retirement, I think, in one of those cases, and the health, dental accounts for those that are the options of the employees.
Well, you currently have that the Milford Middle School is a full-time associate at 6.5 hours. She is a part-time. The Milford Middle School library assistant is a part-time position, so she does not get benefits.
I'd have to check into that one.
It's on my wage report.
It's showing here as 5.5.
Which is a part-time position.
Right.
And on your form right here, you, oh, pardon me.
Oh, it says part-time.
Pardon me. So the $15,502 is her?
Her salary and FICA.
And then you're saying that the $54,408 is what the library associate at the high school?
All-in with New Hampshire retirement, health, dental, FICA, and salary. Sorry.
Okay. I guess I just said, it was a little confusing the other night, so... Okay, I'll, I guess I'll discuss this a little more at the deliberative session. But I did have, Rick, if you could maybe clarify, you, so we're getting 1.5 million back from the state this year, one time, correct? Is that what you had discussed? So I do, as Mr. Rann had pointed out, I guess I have, we're getting 1.5 million from the state. We're reducing all these positions again this year. We spent $7,200 in HR report, $54,000 on a sped report, $12,000 for a PR firm, over $100,000 in legal fees, and yet we're, and we're going up 1.1 million dollars on our budget this year. I think last year, when we discussed all the new hires, the multiple new admins in the district, one of the things I had asked Jessica was how it was going to play out the following year. And this is exactly what we anticipated was going to happen. When we hire an assistant superintendent, no disrespect, again, I don't even know you, at $20,000 over budget, that's $20,000 this year, $20,000 next year, plus any coal that goes along, we all knew this was going to happen. Two new special ed coordinators, an assistant superintendent, all these top-heavy positions, we all anticipated that this is what's going to happen. We have over 150 children in our district that have speech services. We're getting rid of a speech path. We're getting rid of two middle school regular ed associates that have worked for our district for over a cumulative 43 years, and they're just gone because our spending is out of control. We've got to do something.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Wood.
Just a correction. The actual budget is, as proposed, is a $453,947 increase to the operating budget.
Excuse me, can I just clarify that that's not including the reduction of the Heron Pond debt, correct?
That's all-in.
So where's the 1.1 increase coming from then?
I don't know what you're talking about, so I can't really comment. But I can tell you that the operating budget from last year was 42 million, or current year is 42,868,358. And next year, based on what's been voted so far by the board, the proposal is 43,322,305. That's a difference of 453,947.
Suzanne Trudy in Oxbrook Woods. I just have a question. We have a lot of numbers and everything going back and forth. Is there going to be, like we've had in years past, this is what the budget is, this is what it means, the taxpayer, the resident, the parent needs to see. This is what's being cut, and this is what's being added. So if we're cutting positions, we're reducing positions, are we going to have that detailed out so people can see that and understand what they're getting with this budget?
So the budget will be in the deliberative package? And aren't you having a community presentation?
Yes.
To go over the budget, and that will be covered in that?
Yes.
What's the date of that?
Wednesday, the 22nd, 7:00 PM at Town Hall.
Okay. But I've seen, I've seen several of the presentations myself. But also, I don't, even just from the board meeting Monday night, other things have changed. Is there going to be something that says, for example, these two people are retiring, we're not replacing these people? This is what it means, so that the average parent that doesn't come to these meetings as often as we do can understand this is what these cuts mean. This is what we're getting, this is what we're losing. We always used to have that, these are the wants, this is what got cut, and this is where we are. And I don't feel like we're getting a very clear message on a lot of these things. I've seen a lot of the presentations and everything, but I think it really needs to be spelled out.
Again, the presentation will be on the 22nd.
And is that going to be available online?
Let me finish, please. It will be put where we have it on there, online. This budget book has everything in it. It is not buried in a green book of object codes, which have been in the past. And we've tried to spell everything out. And then it's not in a yellow book where we've had a slide where we put them up there and put them down, one side of the wants, and then what gets proposed. This is the new budget format, and it will be updated from the numbers and put up online and at the presentation on the 22nd.
Okay. We've had a green book, a yellow book, we could have any color book. When we have a book that's this many pages, and you want the average person that does not come to the school board meetings as often as I do to understand it, that's not fair. We used to have a very, very simple, Kevin, you remember, that they would have, these are the things that the admin, we're looking for, the superintendent recommends, doesn't recommend, board recommends, does not recommend, and these things were cut. It was straightforward for folks. Now we have this and everything, and for the average person to go through, they get lost. They're going to say, oh, I want to be on page 25. Well, is it page 25 of this section, this section, or this section? Let's try to make something a little friendly for the average person so that they can be involved and understand. That's what I'm asking for. It's really not too much, I don't think. Maybe it is. It doesn't have to be 200 pages.
And we've had, let me answer. So we've had presentations.
Okay.
I've been to, I think, one or two that you've had in the community, and those presentations have those simplicities that you're looking for. You know, I've heard great things about this budget. I've heard great things about the presentations. And yes, we will give you it too in a simple format, and just like all of the other presentations that we sat here and put up online, and they're on TV, and we've had a ton of them.
And I'm telling you, they're not as spelled out as easily as they once were. That's very straightforward.
And...
And I appreciate the time that's gone into making them, beautiful graphics and all that. But let's be honest, let's just have a straight thing, straight up for folks, so they can look at it, see it, and understand it. Thank you.
Mr. Wood, would you like to comment as well?
I would like to comment, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Having been somebody who's dove into the budget every year for the last 10 years in great depth, clarity of what's here is greater than it always ever has been. And all those moving parts have always stopped at this point, and then as part of deliberative session packages where that clarity of all those moves that took place gets spelled out so that the voters can see it. So I would expect that between the meeting Wednesday, which has never happened before after the budget bond hearing, and the deliberative session package, that it'll be abundantly clear.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just clarify, the Title I admin salaries, only 22% of the Title I budget is used for admin salaries. Just want to make sure that that correct information is out there. And on Wednesday night, we will be talking about the additions versus deletions. I'm very excited about some of the possibilities in this budget. We'll be adding elementary music, which has been gone from the district for many years. We're going to be adding additional health and wellness to the elementary schools. We're going to be adding an additional elementary teacher, an additional nurse to the district, an additional associate. We are actually going to be funding curriculum for the district, which is going, was almost completely eliminated from prior budgets. Professional development for staff will actually be in the operational budget. A lot of really, really great things are part of this budget. It's all spelled out, and the rationale and the alignment to the strategic plan. There are one-time purchases in the plan, many which have been talked about tonight, such as the lathe. The board directed us when we made the cuts to make sure that whatever cuts were proposed, were not going to directly impact the strategic plan and the goals in moving the district forward. And they were very, very difficult decisions. The administrative team did not take them lightly, but we came to consensus in the sense that what we were presenting to you would continue to help move the district forward and help us achieve our goals. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Mr. Martin?
Rick, just, I just want to help, the prior speaker, she is actually correct. You're correct if you're looking at a bottom line to bottom line, that the general fund is up 457,000. The point she was trying to make is, in the current budget, there was $826,000 as part of that budget for Heron Pond and your school board contingency. That's no longer in there. So point of fact, your general fund budget is up over 1.2 million dollars versus last year. I think that's the point she was trying to make. The bottom line is only 450. But if you exclude those, what are now one-time expenditures, the operating budget request is up 1.2 million.
And if I may, that's been the case every single year, that there's a balance between accounts that go down and accounts that go up. And the, you are correct, the 600,000, rough numbers, is Heron Pond debt reduction. That's where the $600,000 for expendable trust comes in, to give the voter the option to reinvest that money back into the buildings and infrastructure. And that was, I think, what was said at the Saturday session was a goal. So that's, that is for clarity. But I mean, the budget bounces up and down based on that revenue, as you know, every single year. And this year, the revenue assumption is, is that we don't return anything out of this year's budget to next year's. And there may be some small amounts. As you know, you can't get to the end of the year and be at, you know, spend every penny. It doesn't work that way.
You're right. It fluctuates from year to year, but paying off a new building, 620,000, that is unusual. That's a lot of freed-up money. I just wanted to clarify, her point was appropriate. Especially because you're taking that 600,000, and you're still asking the voters for the money in a warrant article.
And if I may also just point out that out of that, out of that increase, roughly 800,000 of that is salary and benefits.
I'm not arguing with the number. I'm just saying, her point was accurate because of that other thing.
Thank you.
I just want to speak again to the Title I. So I got my numbers directly out of the budget packet on page 122, $10,360. On page 124, and this was last year's budget, and I'll reference this year's budget, but I'm going to go back to last year. That was 14%, page 124, $38,000. Page 137, $974,000. And then page 14, $68,000. I don't know where I'm miscalculating. And again, I, we can get lost in the numbers, but my whole point is, that's a lot of money not going to kids. And if it needs to go to admin salaries, I think we need to add it into the budget, even if that makes the costs go up. I don't think we should be taking away from kids if we need that admin salary oversight. And I have a hard time, one of those positions on page 122, is for a person's salary at the middle school. We don't have Title I at the middle school. If we need Title I at the middle school, then we should be looking at Title I, then we should be looking at Title I across the whole district.
Mr. Chair? I'm confused. I'm looking at page 122, and I don't see any salaries.
So I'm referencing last year's budget. I can go to this year's budget if you'd like. This year's budget, Title I for, I don't have the exact page numbers, and I apologize, but Title I for Jax is $23,450. Heron Pond, $25,221. Assistant superintendent, $29,000. That's money being taken away from kids. Yep.
Jen, correct me if I'm wrong, and I, maybe I'm completely wrong, but up until this year in the past, the entire Title I director salary was in the Title I budget. And I think all-in, it was close to $98,000, somewhere around there, that wasn't going to kids. And this has been a longstanding practice throughout the district. So we had the Title I director. So we shifted things around, and we broke up that salary that we've always paid as part of the Title I. We're not spending more than what we've always spent in the past for Title I administration. We just spent it all on one person, salary, benefits, wages in the past. And we're not spending any more than that, having broken it up amongst three different people. So no less is going to kids than has ever been done in this district in the past with a Title I director, that the full salary came out. And Meg Peterson had talked about this as part of the administrative discussions. You know, she expressed that concern to me when I first came here, that her whole entire salary was part of the Title I grant and was being taken out of the Title I grant. And had expressed, you know, the desire at one point to see it more in the operational budget. That's just not something we've moved towards. I'm not saying it's a bad idea. In fact, it's probably a good idea. But in the past, the Title I salary's always been fully out of. And I'm talking like wages, benefits, retirement, all of it, straight out of the Title I.
Yeah, and I don't dispute that. I think that, but if we're moving to a district-level Title I oversight, I think we should... I think that, but if we're moving to a district-level Title I oversight, I think we should look at, is there a need at the middle school and high school? And like I spoke to last year, I mean, these kids then go to, you know, having so much support in 5th grade, and then there's a drop-off when they go to 6th grade, but we're still funding positions district-wide through that grant money. And I personally just don't think that's right. And I think whether it's $98,000 was funded through one person, but if there's oversight at the SAU level that's happening, I think we need to look at that.
So, the salaries are currently being spent at the elementary level. The coordinators are also coordinating Title I at the elementary level. And then, part of the salary is being paid for oversight at the district level for the grant, which is normal practice in a lot of districts.
And I just have to correct you, because I did reach out, because I personally have never seen that there's oversight at the district level from the SAU. And they said Title I is district or school-funded funding. This was someone from the DOE said, "I'm not aware of salaries being paid out of the SAU level out of Title I." So, it sounds like we're an anomaly.
Maybe, maybe, I don't know.
Absolutely, or not. I know my past district, it was a 40-60 split.
Okay, and I'd be happy to share my email with you guys from the Department of Ed, because I was curious as to why. And like I said, if that oversight's needed, then put that money into the budget and give that money back to the kids. I'd rather have our costs go up if we need that. But I just think taking that amount of money to pay for salaries is just not right. That's my personal philosophy.
It's been done here for over a decade, and in fact, the way that we split it up this year, we were able to put a few extra $1,000 more towards kids, having taken that Title I.
Yeah, and I get it, it's been done over the decade, and...
No, I'm saying, we were actually able to put more, like a few $1,000 more towards the kids, towards kids' services this year, doing it this way than we have in the past, having all of the Title I Director's salary in the Title I grant.
Yeah, and I just think we're on the path for a lot of changes. This is a perfect way to make a change, to go look at, why aren't we doing district-wide Title I?
Friend Walker, thank you, Steve. You knew exactly what I was talking about, I feel other people might have also. My point being that with that large windfall from the state, in the retiring of the bond, I need to just clarify, what were your thoughts on the middle school library assistants, then? Because it was a little, I wasn't here on Monday night, and it was a little sketchy trend. What are your plans? So, we had that packet that showed how much they made. All three of them are being reduced to part-time for budget savings of what?
$29,498, according to the sheet.
$29,498. So, the assistant at Heron Pond is being reduced one hour and losing her insurance. Is that correct?
If she carries the insurance.
Well, she doesn't. Her buyback, so that's about $4,000. So, there's no difference with the middle school, because they're already part-time. So, then what is going on with the, what's being reduced on the high school library assistant?
She would be reduced an hour and a half, and that would reduce New Hampshire Retirement, FICA, dental, and health.
And her salary.
And any other, you know, sub-life costs, all those other costs that are...
But we discussed the other day that the benefit package is about $28,000. Is that correct, per person?
Not per person, no.
For a family, for a...
Depending on, I mean, how you're looking at it. I mean, these were, you know, I can go in and take a look at the costs.
What would be your estimate about for what a single or a two-person plan would be approximately?
Health, dental?
Either one.
I believe it's about $20,450 is the average. It depends which union or employee we're talking about, as far as a two-person.
Well, she's a classified staff, so...
Well, that would be the numbers that were in there. I mean, I don't have her numbers right in front of me.
So, she's $20,000 just for her benefits, and then, she'd be losing an hour and a half a day, and then, the Heron Pond associate would be about $4,000. I'm just, I'm not, maybe I'll just shoot you an email and try to get, I'm not feeling that that's necessarily the correct amount. But part of it seems like every year, we're just spending a ridiculous amount of money on, and Rick, you said it again, 20, the wages and benefits are the most that we spend in our district, correct? I mean, you've been saying that over and over again. But I'm just going to reiterate the fact that there's 10 people at the SAU that make up 3.5% of our wages costs in this whole district. That means there's 423 people in the district that make up 96.5%. So, if you go to your little chart that has the, what, $22,960,000-something for district wages, I'm not including benefits, I'm just including wages. And then, if you go to the SAU, and you figure out the amount that the SAU has paid just in wages, in FICA, it's 3.5% for 10 people. And yet, this year, we've gotten rid of three library assistants, two regular associates, multiple program associates. Once again, the people who do directly work with the children are the ones that are getting affected. The library assistant at the high school, she's there in the morning and the afternoon for all these kids to come. I wrote a letter to the board today, how it's going to affect all these people, all these kids that have nowhere to go after school now because of the library assistant. Heron Pond, 10 bus duties a week from somebody to save $4,000. It just doesn't make any sense to me. We're spending an exorbitant amount of money on other things. We should be spending it on staff members, the ones who work with the children.
Okay. Moving on to the reading of the warrant articles, warrant article 1. And we'll have a discussion after this warrant article, just on the numbers that we just presented, and we can discuss if we need to make some changes. Shall the Milford School District vote to raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately? The amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or as amended by vote at the first session for the purpose set forth therein totaling $43,322,305. Should this article be defeated, the operating budget shall be $42,911,974, which is the same as last year, with certain adjustments required by previous actions of the Milford School District, or by law, or other, or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 401310 and 16 to take up the issue of a revised operating budget only. The original votes for this was the school board recommended this budget number, five to zero. The Budget Advisory Committee does not recommend it. The vote was two to five. The tax impact is 1895, and the proposed, and the default, $18.69 default. So, that is what we just went over in the budget, and you heard from some of the folks and myself. Is there any discussion from any board members on this, on the number?
And just on the, I'm still trying to follow the last question that came up regarding district salary, because...
I have it right here, Rick.
That's okay. That's okay, thank you.
It's right here, it's all written out.
It's okay. I'm trying to make sure I understand it based on what's written here, so SAU...
Hold on a second. Go ahead, Mr. Wood.
So, on page 216, the SAU is listed out, and it has administrative salaries there, and then it goes down through a variety of different things. And the administrative salary line for the SAU is $345,711 is what I'm looking at. And then, there's support staff at the SAU that's $403,000. So, if I'm not mistaken, that number is roughly $750,000. Is that correct, Jane?
Sounds about right.
$778.29.
Excuse me. Let the board and Jane...
I have it all right here.
Okay, well, we also said, just wait. When you recognize that the podium, don't interrupt the board as they're discussing. Thank you.
So, roughly 750. And Jane, do you have the, so $750,000 is what percentage of the 20-plus million total salary, do you know what that, do you have a calculator handy?
I don't even have my phone with me tonight.
If you could just, if somebody could grab that, I just want to make sure I'm clear that it is what it is, but just want to make sure I understand that. The other question I have, Mr. Chair, as we wait for that, is, as we're looking at the budget line here, I like, my preference is to leave the number how it is written. I would like to have a discussion about potentially changing the number on some of the other warrant articles, if the board wants to have that discussion. But I'd prefer to leave this for the reasons that I stated earlier.
Okay. Any other board discussions on that number? I mean, it's definitely something that we, that can change at the deliberative session by any members of the public or by this board as well.
I just, in light of what was brought up about the intrinsic costs of the library aid reductions, if we're talking about students not being able to go into the library prior to the start of school, or to stay in the library after the conclusion of the traditional school day, is that true? Is that an impact that will result from this collective $30,000 in savings?
I would have to ask Ms. Davis how she's going to go about ensuring that students have access to the library.
So, right now, is the library aide the only person that would be in the library, or?
No.
So, other teachers go in and open the library? Like, if the deficits for these reductions, I think that's an important question to ask, because to me, the $60,000 that we can save from having the three-day-a-week guaranteed nurse being offset by, you know, a line item that encompasses three existing employees, and, you know, you talk about it from a dollar figure only. But when we think about 40 years of collective service to the district, and we're going to take away retirement and healthcare, and for a combined savings of $30,000 for three people, and bring on a full-time nurse that I don't personally think that the district necessarily needs, to me, that's a discussion worth having. Mr. Chairman, what are your thoughts?
Well, I think we've had the discussions at our regular board meeting. We threw the numbers back and forth on many things. We've heard from the administration, and the board voted on the number. I think at this point, you know, that's something that can definitely be brought up at the deliberative session, if there's numbers to put in and add more money in there. And then, the board, with the more money, the administration will put together...
Well, I'm not looking at a deliberative session discussion. I'm looking at a discussion right now amongst the board. I know that the admin made it clear that they would prefer to have the one full-time nurse. I, you know, just want to put it on the record that I don't believe that the district needs that. I believe the fact that we have decided to keep the health associates is really directly related to the fact that a three-day-a-week full-time nurse could suffice. I just think it's a mistake to, I'm just not comfortable that that's in the best interest of the district. And again, I also agree with Mr. Wood that potentially decreasing the size of the expendable warrants, but if the Budget Committee, back to one of the points that I believe Mr. And made, if when we put our proposed budget on the ballot, and it says that the Budget Committee primarily doesn't support it, it's going to be a hard sell. So, I think that we need to be a little more reasonable and negotiate a little further.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to, again, reiterate, the administrative team was unanimous in their feeling and support that we need an additional nurse in the district. Just this week, we've had three days where we have been short a nurse. Two of those days, including tomorrow, we have been short two nurses. And we have been rotating nurses through the different schools. In some cases, we've been uncovered without a nurse. So, if there was ever a week that has demonstrated the need for an additional nurse full-time, it's been this week, and over the last few weeks, we have regularly had at least one nurse out. So, I just want to, again, stress the importance and the need of additional health service support, and just the struggle just this week that we've been having as the leadership team is trying to fill those gaps.
Thank you, Dr. Hizanga. I fully believe that we need more nurse coverage. I think that we're in an anomaly situation right now. I know that at least one nurse has a family member in ICU, which is not normal or typical. I think that it's interesting that you said three days, because that's what the addition of the floating guaranteed nurse would be for the district. Again, at a cost savings of $60,000, I think that furthermore, it's important to note that one of the problems we're having is attracting substitute nurses to the district. And again, this is a solution that would address that. I'm not saying that this would necessarily be a permanent solution, but I think that it's worth trying for one year and then seeing if the three days a week is enough. And if we could potentially do that and still, you know, address some of these other projected changes that could potentially negatively impact the students in the district. And I know that that is your stance, and I appreciate it. But at the end of the day, we have to make decisions, we have to make difficult decisions, and we have to, we don't always get what we want. And I think that if there are ways to potentially sweeten the deal for the taxpayers who inevitably will vote in favor of or against the budget, that it behooves us to have these discussions.
So, again, I think that we've had these discussions, we've had the proposals from the administration. The board deliberated this at the last meeting. I think if it needed to be changed in any manner with a figure, that needs to be done at the deliberative session. And I think there'll probably be other items added to it. So, I think we've had those, and I'm not, I'm bouncing back and forth with the gap and trying to, in my own mind, I do realize that when the Budget Committee doesn't like the budget, and I worry about going down that far. So, I think it's a good place at the deliberative session, maybe even for the board, to add the money in as well, if the public wants to add other things in as well. It's not a bad thing to do at that time. And the board will revote at the deliberative session if support or not supporting how that is presented. So, does anyone, any other members of the board have discussions on changing that number, or any thoughts?
Jen Ball, Shady Lane. It is still disheartening to sit here on this side and listen to the conversations that are occurring. And I don't know if you, as the school board members, know that you're presenting this way. It feels and it comes across that you are trying to figure out ways, and I'm going to say it wrong, to rob Paul to pay Peter, or rob Peter to pay Paul, on the baseline of people who have direct, direct impact to our students. And I never heard you guys have these conversations about budget when we had police officers standing here, when we hired a PR firm. I never heard you guys push hard and to question in that avenue. But when we are questioning staff members who are having a direct impact on students, all that I'm hearing is that we're going to rob, I'm going to say it wrong again, rob Peter to pay Paul, but I never heard you with that passion when it came to having a PR firm hired by this district, and it is frustrating. Here's a recommendation, get rid of the PR firm. Get our money back from the PR firm, because we don't need it. It sounds like we need nurses, it sounds like we need libraries... It sounds like we need nurses, it sounds like we need library assistants, and it sounds like we need people having a direct impact and influence on our children. I encourage you as a school board to have those types of conversations. I encourage you to push in that avenue, but from somebody on the outside sitting here, I'm frustrated that we are looking at robbing Paul to pay Peter with kids, but nobody has pushed that hard when it came to having police officers standing here, when it came to hiring a PR firm. Just my opinion, please take it with a grain of salt, but it's incredibly frustrating.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, thank you, Ms. Ball. Actually, I think that's a terrific recommendation to look at decreasing the funding for the public relations moving forward in the budget, as well as, you know, somebody brought up the point at our last meeting, if you have a line item that's problematic, you don't keep throwing funding at it, you look at a way to reel it back. I understand your thought process around the increase in the legal budget, but I think fundamentally, it's our responsibility to stop relying on legal counsel so heavily. I think it's our responsibility to ensure that the administration doesn't pick up the phone so often to reach out to legal, as well as the board, and I think that if we made a concerted effort there, it's another bucket that we could potentially recuperate some funding for. So, I thank you for that insight. Sometimes it's hard when we're here and we're trying to discuss it, and we're trying to look at it diplomatically, and I think it's really important for residents, teachers, parents to come forward with ideas. I think it's what turns positive forward movement, so, thank you.
Polly Durand. I think that the board needs to make the decisions about what that bottom-line number is going to be for the budget tonight, because to say, well, we can just add it in at the deliberative session, somebody can make a motion and add in 50 grand, or whatever it's, you know, somebody does, we all know that it's a bottom-line budget, and so, at the deliberative session last year, somebody put in 50,000 or 60,000, whatever that number was, to add into the budget with the hope that it would be to hire back some people that had been cut loose, and it was not used for that purpose. So, I think there's more weight, it's more transparent. If the board can make those decisions here in this forum, rather than say, all right, let's have somebody add it in at the deliberative session, unless you're saying you as, and I don't even know if this is legally allowed, that you as a board are going to start the deliberative session and say, it says this amount, but we are making a motion to add $50,000 to our budget. For somebody else to get up and do that, it just won't have the same weight as if you can come to terms with the numbers that you are going to put in this operating budget or any of, or any of the other warrants, then we know what it's going to be used for and where it's going to go, but if we do that in deliberative session, then we have no idea where that money really would go. Thank you.
Thank you.
What is the line item budget for the PR firm, for the proposed budget?
It's not in the budget.
Sorry?
It's not in the proposed budget.
It wasn't the master's proposed budget.
What is the line item for legal fees?
16.
I want to say it's like 32310, 310, maybe?
So, the proposed budget for the 2021 is 23,000 for legal fees?
No, it's more than that. I thought you were asking me a line, the line item.
No, no, I'm asking you the dollar number. And we have no proposed funding for public relations?
No.
No.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, could I make a motion? I would like to make a motion to decrease the budget by $100,000 and offset $40,000 from the proposed legal fund, and to replace the full-time head nurse with the suggested three-day guaranteed nurse as put forth by the nursing staff at a savings of $60,000. That would be a combined savings off the proposed budget of $100,000. You mentioned that at the deliberative session, it's a lot easier to put money in. At that point, I feel if the residents felt it was more important to have a full-time nurse, that that could be addressed at that point, but that's a way right there to recuperate $100,000.
Mr. Chairman, I tried to speak several times at the meeting the other night to address what I heard, the costs that were given for the part-time nurse, because I don't have the proposal, I wasn't provided the proposal, but I believe you're using $200 a day. That nurse would be a member of the teacher's unit. The minimum salary, the very base salary, would be $43,000 divided by 185 days is $232, I believe, a day, times 112 days.
So, $32 extra a day, times, I believe they had said it would be a minimum of...
$200 a day.
Yeah, so it would be an extra $32 a day, and I believe they had said it would be a minimum of, or a maximum of three days a week.
We also budget typically at a master's eight. The, we hired our nurse last year at a master's 11. Sometimes there are more, sometimes there are less, but we wouldn't typically use the lowest number, a BA zero, as far as a nurse.
But Jane, can I just ask, is that a part-time position, though? Because you're...
Excuse me, Ms. Chedin. Excuse me. Wait till you're called on before, we're still deliberating between the business administrator and the board.
Whether part-time or full-time, it would still be the same daily cost. If you're talking three days a week, we have part-time staff in our teacher's unit. It would be part of the teacher's unit. They would not be hired on a separate salary schedule than what is proposed for the teacher's unit.
Jane, what do we pay the sub-nurse right now?
I am not sure, Holly, I would have to check on that.
Is there any way we can get that figure tonight?
We could. I want to say maybe it's $100 a day. I honestly, I don't know.
So, we're paying a, just general sub, $100 a day. I think that it's very reasonable to think that for double that, and a guaranteed work week of $3 a day with no benefits, but you're guaranteed that you're going to have three days a week, and we're doubling what the normal nursing salary rate would be, I think that we could indeed do that. I definitely think it's worth investigating, and again, if it's an easier way to present it, I could break that into two motions. I could make one motion to deduct $40,000 from the legal fee line item, and then make a second motion to address the nursing. But I think that we need to, I agree that we need to resolve it tonight. We need to try to get the budget down a little.
So, first off, you made a motion, and then it tailored off too longer than what anyone here can calculate. I didn't follow all of it. So, do you have a motion that you're...
Yes, I'd like to make two separate motions. The first motion...
So, let's do the first one.
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to reduce the legal fee line item on the budget by $40,000.
So, $40,000 less than the $43,322,305.
Yes. Yep, it's currently, I believe she said, 120... Do you have that figure, Jane? Sorry, the current legal...
The budgeted amount for legal is $80,000.
Okay, so to reduce it in half.
Okay.
I mean, is this going to be the easiest way to try to get the budget down? Make individual motions?
Well, first, let's, the motion, we have the motion on the floor first. Do I have a second to reduce?
Do you have a discussion?
Yeah, we'll have a discussion.
Okay.
Do I have a second for that? If we have, well, you need a second to have a discussion.
Okay, a second.
Okay, second and... Discussion.
Okay.
Sure, absolutely.
How much did we spend last year in legal fees? Just so I can have an idea before voting on it.
Last year, I mean, does she have a date?
Well, to date, thank you. To clarify. To date, to clarify.
The actual for 1819, now, there's two parts to this, just so that you understand. Forgive me, it's getting late here. 86,261 is in the legal line, Mike.
Okay.
But...
1819.
30,409 is in the negotiation line as well.
Okay. And how much was budgeted for the 1819? I think it was like 17.
I believe, if I can remember right, I want to say 5,000 was budgeted for negotiations. It went from 12,000 down to 5,000, and we had negotiations with two units, so I'm not sure why that decrease had been made prior to going into a year with two teams negotiating. And I believe the legal line, I don't have it here.
Page 41.
The 1819 budget was 20,000.
Okay, thank you. So, just...
And you got everything, Mr. Wood?
Thank you. So, I'm just looking at the budget book, page 41. So, budgeted in the 1819 was 20,000, spent was 86,261. Budgeted in 1920 was 25,000 at this point, and this is just on the legal side, at this point, spent was 32,752, and that's as of 11-1. And then on negotiations, last year was budgeted 5,000, spent was 30,409, and then budgeted this year under negotiations was 10,000, and as of 11-1, $1,900, or roughly 20% of it's been spent. I also, I don't support the motion. I think we've beat these two items to death, frankly, and I think we've arrived at a budget number. Personally, I think, you know, you know, we've heard all the arguments and made a decision. At least that's the way I feel.
Okay. Any other discussion from the board? All those in favor of reducing the $43,322,305 down by $40,000, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
The motion fails. You had a second?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to replace the full-time head nurse position with a three-day-per-week guaranteed sub-nurse position for a district savings of 59,000 and...
So... So, we're not voting on personnel? We're voting on the number, so are you saying 50? 59,500?
$50.
So, the motion is 40, to reduce the $43,322,305 by 59,550, is that correct?
Correct.
Do I have a second for that motion? Seeing no second, that motion fails. Any more discussions on Article 1 from the board?
Move to Article 2.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. When do we get an opportunity to actually voice our support that will be on the warrant article on the, for our voting day? Like, right now, it says that, you know, the school board supports the budget as presented.
We'll have another session at the deliberative, as that will change.
It's after deliberative, correct?
Yeah, after the deliberative, we'll have an opportunity before the press.
Thank you.
Okay. Comments on the first, on the article we just discussed, Ms. Chedin?
Yep, the comment was about the nursing staff. You were saying, Jane, that the starting salary was around the 43 to 49 range, but that's full-time, and this was a three-day-a-week position that we're talking about that didn't include benefits, so I just wanted to make sure that that was understood there.
Oh, I do understand that, but we take the full-time salary and we prorate it. We don't start at anything off that scale.
But we're talking about a three-day-a-week position, not a five-day-a-week position.
But you still, in order to get your daily cost, you're going to divide the 43,000, which is 185 days' salary, you're going to divide that to get your daily cost, which is roughly around, I think it was 232. I don't have my numbers in front of me.
And then you're going to put your benefits.
And then you would multiply it by the, what, 112 days, which is probably your three days a week?
And, but it's still not going to be the 43 to 49,000 that you stated, and I think when people hear that initially, they think that's what the salary's going to be for a three-day-a-week position, so I just wanted to make sure we clarified that on that one. As we talk about the nursing thing, I also want to just say that this has come about because of the Jock School having only one person there. The need is for a health associate to be there with them.
So, again...
And I'm going to just add this in, because it is part of the budget.
So, let me tell you, we're talking about Article 1. We're talking about Article 1. We're not talking about operations, we're talking about the budget, okay? And I've said that several times, Ms. Chedin, okay? We're talking about the budget and the budget number.
And one of your proposals on the budget is for a full-time floating nurse, and one of the options that was there before was to have an associate there to be at the Jocks building, which would be a savings for the budget. So, rather than having a full-time, a full nurse, three days a week, that floated from building to building, have an associate at Jocks where it's really, truly needed, would be a cost savings. So, that is part of the budget that we could talk about, because that would be a savings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I go?
Yeah. Step on up.
Jen, Shady Lane, I just want to make the comment in regards to the SAU staff stating that the PR firm is not in next year's budget. It is important for the tax community to understand it was not in this year's operating budget, yet it was requested by the SAU and agreed by the school board to spend that money. Again, money away from our children, money that has nothing to do with Project of a Graduate, money that has nothing to do with access to children accessing their educational environment. It is still frustrating to hear us arguing over the nitty-gritty of people who are having direct impact with our students, and comments being made of, well, it's not in next year's budget. Are you guys going to push back if somebody wants a PR firm for next year's school budget and makes that change, and makes that request to hire a PR? Because I don't feel like you guys did that this year, and it was money taken away from our students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I just wanted, it didn't seem like anyone had a clear figure for the PR firm. So, for, we spent 11,888 on a PR firm. I don't know why we're having this much discussion about supporting kids. If, we were easily able to spend 12 grand on a PR firm, and we took money from the previous year's budget to pay for that PR firm, so I guess I would just, I would question why, why we're having this conversation if we're paying for that, that firm that was never even budgeted for.
Thank you.
Jane, I have a question regarding the proposed expenditures by object code, and you have wages as 22,458,548. Does that include FICA, or is that just wages?
Which, I don't even know what you're referring to, sorry, Brenda.
Page 140 of your budget report.
Okay.
It's the 100 object code total, Jane, before the changes that got made by the board.
The wage-related costs or insurance and all that falls under the 200 code, not the 100 object code.
So, I'm looking at Table 93 on page 140 of the budget. It says wages 22,458,548.
What was the page number again?
One forty.
Thank you.
I don't think it's the same page we have, Brenda.
Can I show you?
Yeah, please.
Sure.
Well, isn't it like two one forties or something like that?
Yeah, those are just wages.
Not FICA?
No, nope, those would fall under benefits.
Okay, great.
Yep.
So, it is three point five. Did you see how we got that, then? If it was including FICA, it would, you know, obviously bring it up.
Yeah, I see three point three, yeah.
What is that?
Three point three.
Actually, I think it was three point four six, but it doesn't matter, close enough. So, you get my point, right?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, warrant article two. Shall the Milford School District vote to establish a capital maintenance expendable trust per RSA one ninety-eight, twenty dash C five for the purpose of covering expenditures for necessary facilities repair and to raise and appropriate the sum of six hundred thousand to be placed in this fund and further to be, to name the Milford School Board as agents to expend from the fund. The sum is to come from general taxation. The school board recommends this five to zero. The Budget Committee does not recommend this as a vote zero to five, and the tax impact is point three seven per thousand.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Wood?
I would move to change the sum to four hundred thousand.
I'll second that.
Motion to change to four hundred thousand, seconded by Mr. Drew. Any discussions?
I have a discussion question for Jane. You had mentioned earlier the term health and safety expendable trust or warrant?
Health and safety, yeah, expend, not expendable, just a health and safety warrant.
Do you recommend that we change this to that terminology? Or do, I know that there had been some pushback and some concern about the word capital.
The wording, the wording is gonna be up to you. I kinda was, you know, it changed each night, and I think the last time that that was in there, the word capital was to be inserted, so I did do that. The health and safety warrant is a separate type of warrant, different type of expenditure. And I think we did discuss it the first night that I had brought these forward. And just so that you know, if you were to put it in tonight, you can then act on it, you know, at deliberative. If it does not go in tonight, that particular warrant, you, it does not come up at deliberative. Just letting you know that.
Mr. Wood?
So, just so I'm clear, the health and safety account is a specific account that sunsets at the end of three years and is not an expendable trust, but it's a perpetual account. Thank you.
But it is also held by the trustees.
Understood.
Okay.
Yep. We need a second. We have a second.
So, you have a second for Mr. Drew, any more discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to just kinda explain why. So, when we think about the budget and the way that we're putting it in at a four hundred fifty-three, nine forty-seven increase above last year's expenditure, and then the discussions that have happened this evening, I think it's a good balance to be able to deal with the boilers and a few other items that we have on the eighteen million dollar deferred maintenance list and gets us started in the right direction while still maintaining that fiscal conservative position. If all three warrant articles passed as written, the current tax rate impact would be twenty cents total at four hundred thousand. So, I think that that twenty cents total means, you know, a sixty-dollar increase annually on a three hundred thousand dollar house. I think that most people realize that, you know, that we made contractual obligations last year to the tune of seven hundred thousand-plus dollars of increase. There are normal increases that occur. We have a twenty-five percent increase in water and sewer and a few other items that they're just, they're natural. The four hundred thousand, if we do the boilers, one of the things we're gonna see a benefit in is going to be a reduction in fuel costs because of the efficiency gain. I will gain approximately thirteen percent, if my memory serves correct, in efficiency. So, I think that, you know, it's a, it's a good investment, it keeps us on track to keep things going, and it sets up the expendable trust as a dedicated fund, to fund these capital projects.
Mr. Chairman?
Other discussion?
Yes, in reviewing the feedback from the Budget Advisory Committee, I would like to point out that, you know, we talk about getting mutual support. Several members would vote in favor of this article if it were reduced to three hundred thousand dollars. So, I'm not sure why we're looking at the four hundred thousand dollar number if, I'm looking at comments from at least three members that would support it at three hundred thousand, actually, four members, I'm sorry. One member wanted it to go as low as two hundred thousand, and several of them also suggested looking at putting the boilers specifically into the operating budget. Since you voted to support the operating budget as is, unless we were to recommend that the administration go back and find three hundred dollars to offset that with, that's not an option. So, I would suggest that we look at three hundred as opposed to four hundred, and that we also... open that back up for discussion.
Mr. Chair? So, if I recall, the memorandum from Mr. Winn, the three hundred thousand dollar number that the Budget Committee said they could support was after putting three hundred thousand dollars back into the budget, so that's on top of. We didn't do that, so we're actually reducing the overall total down to, pretty close to where, you know, they were talking to begin with, if you look at the total number. So, and we've already, we've already dealt with the operating budget side, and the reality is, is the Budget Committee hasn't had the benefit up until today of us actually explaining the thought processes, and I think that's part of the process in deliberative. And, you know, like you said, I think the four hundred thousand is a good change. If the voters or the Budget Committee wants to propose a change at deliberative, then certainly that's their prerogative.
Yes, I recognize that we didn't put the boilers into the budget, but to read their thought process, I would vote in favor of this article if the boilers were removed from this warrant and placed in the operating budget, and this warrant article was reduced to three hundred K from two. So, again, separate, issuing separate, another suggestion was to issue separate warrant articles for the boiler replacement, three hundred, and then to have this expendable trust started with a lesser amount of two hundred. Fourth opinion, establish a capital maintenance expendable trust at an amount of three hundred with no reference at all to removing or displacing the boilers. And another one, if it were reduced to three hundred, would support.
Any more discussion? Any changes to your motion?
No.
True. Okay. We have a motion on the floor to reduce Article Two from six hundred thousand to four hundred thousand. All those in favor of reducing that warrant article to four hundred thousand? All opposed? Motion passes four to one. Mr. Martin, anything on that warrant article?
Yeah, I had two things, but now I'll add a third. I will tell you, even if you reduce it to three hundred thousand, if the boiler is not in the operating budget, you would get five no votes to support three hundred thousand, including mine, because five of us were adamant. A boiler that you know that needs to be replaced does not go into an expenditure trust fund. So, my two comments, one was clearly to bring up the boiler again. The other one was, one of the things the New Hampshire Association of School Business Officials does is a lot of professional development. And we bring in experts from all sorts of fields to give us best practices. Almost every year, we have people coming in with, how do you write a successful warrant article? We've even brought in PR firms who work for school districts. Everyone says, if you don't, in the first line, make it clear what you want the voters to vote for, you're doomed. And I gotta tell you, if someone told me you wanted a capital maintenance fund of any kind, I'd vote no, 'cause capital is anything that's capitalized. I don't know what Milford's capitalization threshold is, most districts, it's like five thousand, ten thousand dollars. I would vote no, because I want this money to go to facilities, okay? The PR firm, I forget the number they gave us, but it was unbelievable, the high percentage of voters that do not read the entire warrant. If this thing said, facilities, maintenance, expendable trusts, and all the people that knows the facilities are in trouble, that's what you should be calling it, because that's what people understand the problem to be. So, I would urge you to put that word, facilities, in the name of the trust.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Mr. Wood, you wanna respond?
Yeah, thank you for that, Mr. Martin. That particular description is something that we've been struggling with, and the only concern with the term facilities is it, leaves it open for people to think of regular maintenance, such as, you know, custodial maintenance and, you know, painting something that got damaged, and we wanted to give a different perception. And so, that's the reason, I really don't have any heartburn if the board decides to change that to facilities, but that was the logic of why we picked...
I think it was originally.
Yeah, I think it was facilities originally, it was deferred maintenance, deferred facilities maintenance or something, and then we didn't like the word deferred, 'cause people were concerned about that. So, I certainly have no objection to changing the word to facilities if that's what the board wishes. I agree with you, you want it as clear as possible.
Okay.
Susan Smith, one thirty-six, Anna Drive. I would like to clarify again that the Advisory Committee is not unanimous on the three hundred thousand dollars for the boilers needing to go into the operating budget. And that is not the case, that we will all vote against the reduced warrant article for building maintenance, whatever you're calling it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I ask?
We can change that later.
Is this something that would need to be changed now in order to be published with the right name? 'Cause I think at deliberative, you're only allowed to change the, all the value?
You can change wording if it's for clarification, I believe. So, Steve probably is more familiar in that.
I think you can't change the intent of the, you can't change the intent of the article, but you can, you can, you can edit the language, but the intent can't be there.
Hold on.
So, excuse me, hold on, the board is deliberating here.
If the board is inclined, I'd prefer, if we're gonna change it, we change it now and make it as clean as possible, so I'm gonna go ahead and propose that, that we change the word capital to facilities.
We promise not to change it, babe.
And go back, I promise, I'm not gonna bring it up again.
I think we've had it a bunch of times.
Yeah, we have.
I'll second that.
Is that a motion to change that?
That is a motion to change the word capital to facilities.
Mr. Drew seconded it, he beat you for it.
You can have it.
Okay, Mr. Hannah, you've got it.
Good job.
Any more discussion on that?
Just, can we repeat what the motion is with Ms. Talap, just go back, I wanna make sure.
I think I got the gist.
You did okay.
Okay. All those in favor of replacing the word capital, so I get it right, was we're replacing capital with facility now?
With the word facilities, yep.
All those in favor of replacing the word capital in the warrant article number two with facilities? All those in favor? All opposed? Seeing none, motion passes, we'll change that on the article. Okay. Do you have a question on this article?
No, I didn't have a question, you guys asked a question, so I just wanted to...
Was it a question?
...clarify for you about the question you just asked.
Which is what?
Which is, what, what you guys were asking, if you could change a warrant article before it got to deliberative, or could you change a warrant, Rich?
I think that's already answered.
Think it's already been answered.
Can I just...
Sure.
Okay. I know you guys have seen the warrant article that will be presented deliberative, it's not on the agenda, so we won't talk about it. But you can change the entire wording at deliberative, just so you know.
So, just so you know, I said...
Okay, I'm talking, ah, 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 ah.
Be careful here, I am the board chairman, you will not, you will not talk...
Excuse me, you just gave me the floor.
That's right, and I will stop you with the floor.
I am, I am...
I will stop you with the floor, as I said. Ms. Morgan, you're out of order. You are out of order. You are out of order.
Am I?
Yes.
Then, what are you gonna do?
What am I gonna do? Are you really coming in front of this board and disrupting a public meeting?
I, you just said I could talk. I'm trying to talk, you interrupted me.
I will let you speak, but I will clarify with it.
Oh, thank you!
But don't put words in what I've said.
I didn't put any words in what you said.
I'm not gonna argue with you again.
Yeah, you're doing it right now. I'm trying to talk, you gave me the floor, you interrupted me, so can I speak, or can I not? Thank you, pumpkin. Okay.
Wait a minute. Women.
You are out of order. You are out of order and disrespecting this board, and you continually do it. I will make a motion to take a recess at this point.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, we will take a recess and clear this room. Thank you. I will call the meeting back to order. I apologize to those members in the audience and to those folks for the disruption. I will now read number three. Warrant article number three. Shall the Milford School District vote to establish a special education expendable trust fund per RSA one ninety-eight, twenty dash C five for the purpose of covering emergency expenditures arising in the area of special education and to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred thousand dollars to be placed in this fund and further to be named the Milford School Board as agents to expend from the fund. This sum is to come from general taxation. School Board recommends this five to zero. The Budget Advisory Committee recommends this five to zero. It has a tax impact of twelve cents per thousand. Any questions on this warrant article? Just statements on this warrant article is that this is something the board has discussed in past history and has been, it's probably long overdue as an item of a warrant article. Any questions on the special, on warrant article number three for the special education expendable trust? Okay.
Dave Wilson, Wildflower Way, just a point of clarification for the public. As we know, over the years past, we've always asked for the special education emergency fund, we get the two hundred, we hold it, and then we give it back to them. In the budget book, in the numbers presented tonight, one of those line items shows, I think it was like a hundred ninety-seven thousand. So, basically, the funds, from what I saw, is, in a way, going back to the taxpayer again. Am I correct, Jane?
Well, in this case, no, because you're, you're raising and appropriating this amount, it will go into the expendable trust fund, so it won't go back, it's there, yeah.
Yeah, no, I totally get that, that's the second part. The first part, what I was addressing is, that money is coming back to the taxpayer. That was a positive number in the numbers that you, that you gave us tonight in the packet.
Right, last year, we raised and appropriated that two hundred thousand in there, and that went back to offset the taxes.
Got it, so just to help get this passed, it's the idea to let people know that this time, that the funds would stay in the hands of the board and that we would not be, keep on coming back for another warrant article yet again. And so, it's a positive, and it's the same number. So, we've been, as a history, we've been always having this pass, which is an awesome thing, and knowing how this money and what it goes for is incredibly important. I think just in some, whether we have an informational packet, the budget guide, whatever we wanna call it, have that general explanation, so as, you know, people have commented, make it simple and easy for us people to say, yes, it's a very small dollar value when you look at so much per thousand.
Mr. Wood?
Thank you for bringing that up, because that's an important feature to also remind people that expendable trust funds actually earn interest instead of costing us interest to borrow money. So, if the money sits there and doesn't get used next year because we didn't have an overrun in special ed, it'll actually be earning money.
Second question to that effect, but I know it's on Article Two about a different dollar value. No matter what amount of money is put out forth to be harvested, to be held for facilities, fix-it, you know, the fix-it account, whatever you wanna call it, right? That would also have the capacity... That would also have the capacity to be put, when not in spending use, to be invested to earn.
They're both, they're both trust trusts.
Again, I think that would be a strong point to make to the public, so it has a positive by letting us hold that money. We're not just sitting it in a mattress. It's going to be going to a purpose until it's spent. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any others on warrant Article Three? Okay. So I would like to close the budget hearing for the Milford School District and scheduled back into the public meeting, and then we will take a motion to go into non-public session under RSA ninety-one eight-three-two for personnel. Do I have a motion for that? Do I have a second? All those in favor entering non-public, say aye. My roll-call vote. Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Mr. Hannity?
Aye.
Myself is an aye. Mr. Drew? Ms. Talapa?
Aye.
We are now in non-public session. Thank you.